I'm City Manager, Madam Clerk. Thank you all for being here. Tonight's already getting started a tad bit late. It won't be long tonight. Madam Clerk?
Good evening. Mr. Rickaman? Mr. McDowell? Mr. Duval?
Present.
Ms. Devine? Mr. Davis?
Yeah.
Mayor Benjamin?
Present.
Thank you.
Would you, uh... Would you all stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Reverend McDowell, would you bless us with a word of prayer?
Let us pray. You've allowed us to gather in this place to discuss and to be sensitized with conversation. Touch us and yet ignite us for a greater service for our city and our community. Bless us all. We ask it in your name. Amen.
Amen. All right. Madam City Manager?
Yes, sir. Mayor Benjamin, at this time we would ask that council adopt the agenda as outlined.
That motion.
So moved.
For a second. All right, discussion. With the previous question, clerk will call a roll.
Mr. Rickaman? Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis? Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
At this time I would ask for any public input related to these agenda items. Seeing none. I'm sorry. I think the council may allow for that at the time. Would you like to do it, Mayor Benjamin? This is on the River Drive, um, issue? Yes, ma'am. Sometimes when it's one particular item, they may do it at the time of the item.
Sure. How you all handle it? Ms. Davis? Well, since we're gonna... We have... Yeah, we, um...
Is there anybody here on the consent agenda? Won't you do that and get it out of the way?
Sure. Let's, um...I tell you what, this is what we're gonna do. Like, of course you get all the input you can, then you just say that this is what we're gonna do. Let's, um...hold off for one second. Let's go ahead and take up the minutes. Is there a motion to approve January 19th minutes?
For a minute.
Just a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, remove the previous question, and the clerk will call a roll.
Mr. Rickaman? Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items nine through seventeen?
So move.
Moving probably a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, remove the previous question, and the clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Rickaman? Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye. Uh, we...and I...in the interest of efficiency and fairness and the fact that I know all of you would rather be somewhere else than here right now, including probably most of my colleagues, I know there are several of you who've communicated with us about your concerns about 3329 River Drive. I know the applicants are here along with the Representative Senator Scott. I'm not sure. We'll have to have everyone speak. Let's figure out some way in which we can...is your prerogative to do so. Let's see if we can have some representative comments and then certainly have the applicant speak. And then I think Mr. Davis has some comments. So would you like to speak first, please? Identify yourself for the record, please.
Thank you, Mayor Benjamin. Council members, good evening. My name is Kathleen McDaniel. I live at 3103 Lakewood Avenue, Columbia 29201 in the Earlwood neighborhood. I'm the president of ECHO, which is the Neighborhood Association for the Earlwood neighborhood. And in the interest of time, I agree that we probably...we have, I think, seven people signed up to speak, and we can cut that down to four. So it will be me, Tim McConnell, Jennifer McBroom, and Jim Prater. We don't want to take up any more time than necessary. First of all, let me thank you all so much.
Krista or staff, do we have the visuals from the last meeting as well? Maybe you can put those up on the screen so folks who...that'd be very helpful. Thank you. Please.
All right. Thanks again for letting us appear this evening, and it certainly does make sense to speak at this time. My apologies. We did not, as a neighborhood, were not keeping track of the county, the city council agendas and did not realize that this had come up before you all at your previous meeting. And you all had no idea of the, um... You all had no idea about the effect that this would have on the neighborhood. So we certainly are glad to have the opportunity not to tell you about that and hopefully convince you to vote against rezoning this property. Our two main concerns, our two concerns are that zoning this property commercial permits the further encroachment of commercial zoning into the Earlwood neighborhood, which has been residential since at least 1910. If you look out here, you see a bunch of folks out here with T-shirts on. Those are residents of Earlwood, and on the T-shirt it says "Establish 1910." And if everybody who is here with Earlwood, if you'd please stand up. So we have more than 50 folks here tonight from our neighborhood that are opposed to this zoning.
We thought there that many people interested in this general democracy. So it's a little bit disappointing to see that everyone's here on this issue.
I know, I know. It's the power of social organizing. And so we want this corridor to remain commercial. We know... Sorry, it's remained residential. Sorry, sorry. From Sunset down to Lancaster, those two blocks are commercial. Lancaster is where the commercial ends. From North Main into River, there's only one block of commercial. And those are the boundaries that have always been agreed on and understood within those to be the residential district. In addition to preventing the encroachment of commercial zoning, we are concerned about the number of uses that are available in the C1 zoning district that are not available in RG2 and the negative impact that some of those might have on the neighborhood. Of course, once the property is zoned, any of those uses could be made of it, and the neighborhood would have no ability to shape or have input on what the use would be. Looking at it from a legal perspective, we have to look at the requirements for zoning, which are found in Section 17-135. In order to approve a zoning change, the applicant must demonstrate the need and justification for the change. In this case, it's our understanding the need is she simply wants to sell the property, and personal economic gain is not sufficient. Second, you have to look at the effect of the change, if any, on the property and the surrounding neighborhoods. We'll have folks tonight that will talk to you about the residential nature of the neighborhood and the negative effect that commercial encroachment would have. You also have to look at the amount of land in general in the city having and having the same district classification. In this area, it's all residential except for those two boundary points where I've mentioned. And then last, you have to look at the relationship of the proposed amendment to the purposes of the general planning program. And as you know, staff has recommended denial of this because it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan, especially for this portion of the city of Columbia. And I know time is tight, so I will close my statements there. Thank you again. Please deny this rezoning request.
Thank you.
And Tim?
Well, we're gonna...the proponents are here as well, so Senators, you wanna speak, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. Let me, let me first start off by saying I represent you as well in Earlwood. I would not want to bring anything unwanted into Earlwood that Earlwood would not want. But for the last 34 years, that little spot, that lady's had a hair shop in Earlwood. And that property is first not for sale. There's no for sale sign on that property, so that was so misleading to say the property was for sale and so forth and not for sale. The owner of the property does want to lease the property again as another hair shop. Ms. Moody has been...Ms. Moody has been in that property now almost 34 years and has been a very good neighbor in that neighborhood. The property adjacent to that property is for sale as a residential lot and has been for sale probably over some two years. The house behind it, the Moody's used to own that property too and sold it also as a residential piece of property. The property adjacent to is all C1, not multifamily but C1, and that is an apartment building. The Moody's came, and all the Moody's wanted was to get a zoning change. It's been a special exception, which simply mean if she decides to tomorrow not to get the zoning change and to leave the lights on and the water on and board it up, it becomes an eyesore to the community. It just made more sense to get a zoning change on the property than to board the property up if she's so elected not to rent it. Right now the property is about, it's about 800 square feet. So folk, take it out your mind. You cannot put a McDonald's on that little, on that property with 800 square feet. The lot size, size, you can, I think you can probably get maybe eight or nine cars on the lot for a hair shop. And so all of a sudden, the C1 became just blown up. I received a telephone call too about the property. I thought I did a pretty good job explaining to Mr. Monk when he called me about the property. And so everything went over this, over this whole community is anything can come into it. Not only a roughly 800 square foot flat building. And it doesn't make sense to bring it back as a single-family dwelling. You don't, you don't use a storefront building to make a single family. It doesn't fit then the decorum of the community. So it's to the community advance, advantage to get it rezoned and try to get a small selected hair salon back into it or even a small office building. And that will still meet the decorum of what the community was all about. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council.
Mr. McConnell, thank you.
Mayor Benjamin, council members. I'm Tim McConnell. I live at 3401 Lyle Street, which is directly under that PUD-R on the screen, one block away from the salon. And while I wanted to talk to you about how my family moved in there in 2008 when my oldest was five and my baby at the time was four, and they are now 14, 13, and their younger brother is six, who has known no other home. I would like to address the previous statements and how we definitely appreciate the Moody's as neighbors, and we love the salon where it is. We understand the Moody's are no longer our neighbors, but we still appreciate the salon being there. And while I'm not sure how the zoning change would change the effect of it being an eyesore if it was left vacant, I don't see how leasing it out to another salon in its current status would be detrimental without changing it. So my family's been here for nine years. We had no intention of staying. The reason that we did was because we found this neighborhood. And it is a neighborhood. It's a neighborhood to our family. It's a neighborhood to our family, friends who live right up the street, who have a 12-year-old, 10-year-old, 7-year-old. Our kids run up and down the street to each other's houses to jump on the trampolines, play Wii. We like walking directly up Lancaster, taking a right and going all the way down River to the community gardens. Our concern is, of course, exactly what Kathleen said, that if this property is allowed to change to commercial, the blank space next to it, which is for sale as residential, could easily be changed to commercial and perhaps the rental property next to it as well. It is not adjacent to anything except across Lancaster as commercial. And we're asking that you all consider, on behalf of myself, my family, and our neighbors in the wonderful neighborhood of Earlwood, that you allow it to stay that way nestled in Columbia and not turn into commercial encroachment of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Are there any other proponents of the rezoning here? I know you're speaking.
Forgive me for being a little nervous right now, but I'm not very good at public speaking. But my wife has been here. We moved, when we moved here, moved into the building, we gutted the building out, and we put, we went into debt to fix this building up. We have been there 33 years, and we've maintained a good relationship, I hope, with the committee. I would never, I mean, with the community. I hope we, uh...that's the way I feel. We do not intend to take the building and say, everyone's saying it's gonna be, we're gonna be pretty commercial. All we want to do is make it a small office building possible. Either it remains as a beauty salon or a small office building. That's all. I think everyone should look at and see what a C1 is, what we want. We don't want to do anything detrimental to the community. All we want to do is, my wife is there, like I said, 33 years. Oh, she's retiring. Now, we like to try to recoup some of the money that we have put into the building. We have been paying our taxes. We've been, the revenue that you have gained from this building as a, as a beauty salon. It's for 33 years we have been this building, and no one complained. When we moved into the building, no one complained. No one said, "Well, we don't want a beauty salon here." It's all we're asking for is to put a small office, something like a small law firm, a small, maybe a little small dental office, or maybe a little small hospital, you know, infirmary. That's all we're asking.
Thank you.
Kathleen forgot to put something into the record. If I may, Mayor Benjamin, I totally forgot. We had a petition about, apologize.
For folks who don't have the pleasure of being here.
I'm sorry, Mayor Benjamin. I totally forgot when I was up here. We had a petition signed by 139 members of the neighborhood and 19 emails that have been sent to the council members that I'd like to ask Ms. Erica to put into the record.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer McBroom, and I'm a realtor, and I'm also a resident of Earlwood. And I've been selling in Earlwood for about 18 years. I've watched the price per square foot go up from 75 a square foot to now up to $140 a square foot, almost doubling in value over that time. That's been made possible by the tireless and often thankless work of the Neighborhood Association and their clear vision of a vibrant and historical residential neighborhood. River Drive is a pretty busy road that cuts through the middle of the neighborhood. And I did some research, and the homes on River Drive actually sell for about 20 to 25 percent less than the homes on the interior of the neighborhood. And that's simply just because it's a busy road, and not everybody wants to live on a busy road. Some people may be wondering why we're concerned that this is gonna open up the floodgates, because it sounds very dramatic. However, the homes adjacent and across from commercial properties typically sell for less than other homes just because most people don't want to have a business as their neighbor. So that coupled with the already lower prices on River Drive might make it enticing for other people who live in homes around there to decide they want to sell their homes as commercial and then come before zoning and get it changed. And because the precedent has been set, that will be easier to do. And then the next thing you know, we could have a commercial corridor that goes right through the middle of Earlwood. And right now, it doesn't feel like that because there are homes that fit in with the community. They look just like the homes in the interior of the neighborhoods, and it feels like one neighborhood. But if that were a commercial corridor, I feel like it would split the whole neighborhood in half. It wouldn't feel like Earlwood anymore, and it wouldn't feel historic. So I just think that, um... Well, I think that's about it.
Are there any other proponents who wish to speak? Okay, all right. Please. Jim?
Mr. Mayor and Members of the City Council, I'm Jim Prater. I'm former president of the Neighborhood Association. And interestingly enough, I was before you 36 years ago when we presented the Earlwood Neighborhood Conservation Plan in 1979. And over the course of the two years between the adoption of that plan by the neighborhood and your changing the zoning, which is the zoning intact in the neighborhood, 36 years, this was the central debate, the preservation of River Drive as a residential corridor. And a similar debate took place on the other end of River Drive in the same fashion. I brought along my famous map from, this is the original map from the Earlwood Neighborhood Conservation Plan, 1979. And as you will see here, that, that debate protecting the residential character of River Drive was central to the adoption and to the zoning implemented in our neighborhood in 1982. Good zoning protects the character of place and provides a context for growth. That was our vision originally. And interestingly enough, the non-conforming uses on River Drive, we've never opposed. As long as the non-conforming uses have remained in the same character as was in 1982, we've never had a problem with it. What is a problem is changing the zoning from a non-conforming use to, uh, commercial. As long as it's non-conforming use, you and we have some control, if you will, over the character of River Drive and our neighborhood. When you pull the string here and rezone, we've all lost control over the destiny of River Drive as a commercial corridor. And I might add, over the 36 years, every question of this type, this matter, that we have brought before you, you have denied consistently. The position of the Columbia City Council has been to protect the residential character of River Drive. So with that in mind, and the 36-year history we have enjoyed together, I would ask that you deny the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Ms. Devine? Ms. Devine had some questions, and I have a point of personal privilege.
Krista, where's Krista?
She's over here somewhere.
Krista, just, just so everybody's operating under the same information, I just wanted to get some clarification. So currently, head of staff is operating as a hair salon with a special exception.
It is a non-conforming use in RG2. It may have been in the county, but beauty salons are not a special exception in RG2.
Okay. So if, if Ms. Moody, and there's been a couple things said, so... And I think that, I hope you all can understand, I think that's the neighborhood's concern. I think the senator said lease to a beauty salon, and then Mr. Moody said sell, and then he said it could be a beauty salon, could be an office, and then he went into urgent care, which ends up being even more traffic. So I think that's the concern of the neighborhood, is the uncertainty that's being asked. But as far as under the current zoning, if it wanted, if it wanted to be, continue as a beauty salon, could it operate under, with a special, well, you said it couldn't be a special exception.
Well, it's, yeah, it's a non-conforming use currently, so that's grandfathered in. It continue, it can continue as that use as long as it's not expanded or intensified, as long as it's not vacated for more than 12 months.
Right. So if she wanted to continue lease to another beauty salon, or would that non-conforming use follow if she sold to another beauty salon?
Yes, it runs with the property, not with the owner, unless, of course, there's some intensification. So it has to remain as it is. It cannot be expanded or intensified.
So a zoning change is not required if they wanted to keep that use and sell to someone who wanted to keep that same use?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Moody, please. Absolutely, please. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Evening, ma'am.
It's hard starting a business. If you've ever been in business, you know how hard it is, and you know how hard you have to work. It's not like working from nine to five. During my career, I've worked from 7:30 a.m. till 8 o'clock in the evening, and very tired. But that was during my younger years. I've been in profession for 43 years, and this coming April, I'll turn 65. So therefore, it's time for me to retire. I've been at the location 3329 River Drive for 33 and a half years. And the only thing that I would like to do at this point is not to be so limited to a beauty salon because I feel like it's gonna be harder for me to try to lease. And I truly do respect the community. I think I have good neighbors. You know, I never had any complaints, anyone, you know, that come up to the door, knocking on the door, "You're all too loud. You're playing loud music." That has never happened. Never had any police problems or anything, no crime, not a thing. So it's really been good. And I would like to maintain that. But I would, you know, in all due respect, you know, I mean, like I said previously, if you're in business, it's hard to just try to lease to one type of business. And that, you know, that is my desire, to just open it up a little bit more. I have some papers here from the zoning. And there are some businesses on here that will fall under C1. A lot of people may think it may be some other corporation or McDonald's or something. It can't happen. It can't happen. Because according to zoning, for C1, it's very limited. It says on here, offices and clinics of other health, medical and dental, legal services. It's still very limited. I can't do no more than the zoning allow me to do, and if someone else, if I lease it to someone else, maybe very limited as well. So that's my plea, that you all would please consider, consider. Thank you.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Ms. McDowell?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Any other questions? Any other comment?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I guess a point of personal privilege now, we don't have to have the staff presentation repeated. I'm gonna move that we deny the request for the reasons stated. And looking at the history of Earlwood, and I know what we tried to do in our personally in other neighborhoods in terms of trying to maintain the character of a neighborhood, and also in some cases, trying to bring characters back, to allow the request would be contrary to that. So the motion is to deny it.
Yeah, second.
Second.
All right, discussion. I am, Ms. Moody, I am sympathetic to, obviously, the case you've made. The challenge is, and I think we see these issues often, where people have strongly held and well-founded, well-grounded positions, and no one's wrong. But those, but those two realities are just inconsistent. And the fact is that council has endeavored over a long period of time to try and restore the residential character of River Drive. And this would be consistent with that. It does not at all, as I'm sure you know, make your desires to rezon the property and maximize the economic value poured into that building over the last three decades greater. So I don't want you to see this vote as being contrary to that. We're sympathetic to your concerns as well. But thank you all for being here this evening. If there's no more discussion, I would, as a point of personal privilege after the vote, ask you all to just chill for a second. I have one... I have one presentation before the mass exodus begins, okay? Before you leave. I move the previous question, Clerk Colerole. Sorry, Mr. Senator Scott?
The motion is to ask to withdraw the request.
Withdraw the request? Okay. The, uh, what's, I don't know, I'll defer to the lawyers on that one. Practical effect of withdrawing...
There's a motion.
Yeah, there's a motion. Everybody take a chill for one second. Let me, let me, I know Ed McDowell's unofficial, but official parliamentarian, so he's getting in my ear.
Yeah, he's basically saying, if it's withdrawn, then the request is...
As he could withdraw his motion, the question though is, yeah, I think he can withdraw his motion. He can withdraw his motion. And then if he withdraws his motion, then they can withdraw the application.
The question is whether or not, since we've had a first reading, it can be withdrawn at this time.
What's the practical?
It just dies.
It doesn't get a second.
Yeah, there's no second.
It just dies for lack of action.
What's desire, Senator?
They want to withdraw the application.
So practically speaking, practically speaking, what effect does a withdrawal of application mean? Is that withdrawal, is that with prejudice, without prejudice? Just trying to...
I'm gonna defer about those issues. What it means is that if you were to deny it, another request could not come back before you, for 12 months.
Okay. They withdraw it, they can bring another request later.
Or the same request, for the C1.
Anytime it's denied, you have 12 months before you can come back.
Correct.
Krista, let me make sure you understand, let me make sure you understand. If the request is withdrawn, does a 12-month, there's a 12-month period there?
It does not, it does not. But, you know, but you've had withdrawals midstream previously, so...
If he moves in to, if he moves in to rescind, and so many words, what does that do?
I can advise you on that, but I would imagine that it would just, it would be withdrawn.
You withdraw your motion, that's what you would do.
Yeah.
Items presented to us by, items presented to us by the Planning Commission. If not acted on affirmatively or contrary, of what effect?
Within 180 days, it is denied. But if we have a withdrawal, then it's not your inaction that would be, that would cause that denial.
And without asking too many questions, Senator, is there any particular reason for withdrawal as opposed to the vote tonight? I mean...
Anything to bring a family back together, if you're not fighting, you just can do it. All right, we're just, okay.
All right, I'm, 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 I'm gonna ask everyone just to take a couple of whosas, okay? No murmuring, no muttering, no anything. We're working towards a positive resolution here.
That's the great minds work over here.
I tell you, while you all decide there...
Let's do the presentation.
Um, would you two just confer for a moment about the legality and practicality, exactly what the, you can do that yourselves.
Let him do it now and get it all.
What's fine? I know, but I think, I think there's a sense of the body that, to see some degree of finality, at least at this stage, and I think that's probably prudent as well. So I'm not sure how... Be sure of that.
Not sure, the question...
Well, look, the item, the item was due for a decisive vote.
Correct.
Up or down.
Correct.
During the process, the applicant withdrew the request. So therefore, the, the, the application has no status. It's withdrawn. There's no, technically, there's no need to vote.
We have, we have had that before, prior to it coming to you for second reading. We've had, we've had applicants withdraw before you've heard it for your second reading.
Right.
To my knowledge, we've never had anyone ask for withdrawal during the motion period, but it would seem to be prior to the final action. I'm going to defer to your legal counsel for this.
The prior act, it was prior to the vote.
Correct. So I will defer to your legal counsel on that, but that would be my opinion, however, I'm not your legal counsel.
The difference being, the time it can be brought back up by the applicant.
It's 12 months.
It's 12 months.
But to give finality to the neighborhood, we need to deny this tonight and let him come back in a year's time.
But just to be clear, it's not, I mean, it's final for 12 months, they can come back. I don't want anybody to mislead the neighborhood of this is it, they, 12 months, they could come back. So, I mean, it's not a final, final, but it eliminates it for 12 months. I just don't want anybody in this room to think that it is, they don't have to like to come back, 'cause that's not...
Yeah, absolutely.
But I also think that, and as has been stated by Mr. McConnell and others, you know, the Moody's have been good neighbors. I think that, at this point, what her withdrawal is doing is trying to just, you know, not push the issue. I would like to see, see, you know, if we could, you know, work with them, make sure they understand what they can do as far as leasing to somebody else, 'cause they have been good neighbors, but rezoning opens it up to other things, and that is not acceptable to the neighborhood.
And rezoning was the issue on the table.
Right.
And rezoning has been denied.
Well, it hasn't been yet.
The request would have been denied, but it was withdrawn, so that's where we are. There's no need to vote.
No, we need...
There are preferences that we vote.
I think you need to withdraw your motion if it is...
Okay, the motion to deny is withdrawn.
Your second, person you second. And who second?
I second it, but I'm not gonna withdraw my second. If you wanna withdraw your motion, I'll make the motion.
If the neighbor wants to vote, they...
Neighbor wants to vote? Let's vote. Call for the vote.
If that's the case, I move the previous question.
Don't you love living in the greatest democracy in the history of the world? You can have these...
Move the previous question.
Second.
Call for the vote.
I did, I did.
That takes us for six minutes, seven minutes, 12 minutes. Call for the vote. Been moved and seconded.
I am acutely aware there's a motion on the floor. The, um, and Teresa Kay, the fact that the application's been withdrawn is irrelevant?
Well, it's a legal issue, has it come up before?
Application, not the motion.
It allows them to withdraw the application. It points out in the code, generally, you do that before we get to this point. So we're in the middle of it now. So that's where, I think it would be interpreted most favorable to the applicant, you know, if it's contested. So I think when they try to withdraw, they would be allowed to withdraw. But I don't think this has ever been litigated before, so...
Let's litigate it.
So it's your opinion that the applicant has the prerogative to withdraw the application?
Ninety percent, yeah.
And, um, okay, all right.
Kathleen is just doing her other research, is, do you, you concur with that?
Can we, can we take literally a three to five-minute break for maybe you or you, resident, you, Senator Scott, you, you, just to go outside and talk about this and figure this out? Just take about five minutes and come back in with the resolution. You all understand people, human nature, politics, the issue, community unity, and just do that real quick. The sense of the body is clear. I wanna make sure we're doing this right and proper and legally, we don't see it again. In the interim, I mean, I mean, no, I mean, actually, I really do mean go outside the room and talk about y'all if you can. Yeah, so, that way or that way? Yeah, you can stay here for a moment. No, really, everyone, everyone. Yeah. I'll throw you out like Archie Bunker, "Get out!" In the, in the, in the interim, a very quick point of personal privilege, and as we raced through the agenda earlier, I should have taken up one more item, because my sweet and beautiful nieces are waiting on their mama to come and get them. I'm not sure if they're at, at dance or piano, Eliana and Malana, but their mother, Jennifer Benjamin Pinckney, is here, and I wanted to have her come up for a moment. We often refer, "Come on up, you hear me? Come on, come on." I know, just as most of the, all the men up here know, but certainly all the people in this body know, that a team is a team. And we spent a great deal of time over the last two and a half years remarking over the incredible life of Senator Clemente Pinckney. And more often than not, we don't recognize the incredible labors and work that his right hand, his rib, his, is their wife, who, after 20 years, I guess next year would be 20 years of marriage, and I've known Jennifer probably the entirety of my adult life, at very least. And you talk about a stalwart educator, librarian, community leader, who has, for the last two and a half years, in the wake of the awful events in Charleston in June 2015, stood up as, I believe, a model leader for this community on the world stage, and wanted to take an opportunity on behalf of the people of Columbia. We see each other socially, I get a chance to hug and kiss the girls every chance I get, but rarely do we have a chance to publicly acknowledge the incredible leadership of Jennifer Pinckney, and I wanted to take an opportunity on behalf of the grateful people of the city of Columbia, for your leadership, the love and continued dedication you have to the people of Columbia, South Carolina, the United States of America, and humanitarians all around the world, to grant you the key to the city of Columbia, Jennifer. okay? Is he gone? Okay, good, okay, all right, all right. We're good then, we're good.
Reporting.
Okay, okay. I got, I got my first teenager in my house this weekend, okay? My very first teenager, so I'm acutely aware of these things, my antenna's up, I apologize. So what's the resolution?
We, we, we agreed that in, in view of the withdrawal, that the issue is complete.
Resolved, okay.
Resolved.
All right. Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all so much, all right? All right. And thank, and thank you all for being here tonight and having your voices heard. I will say, as I told many of you, and share with Senator Scott as well, we're gonna continue to work on continued communication, because the fact that no one was here at the last meeting, I think, just created a different, a different sense as to what the sense of the body was. So I feel somewhat for Ms. Moody as well, because there was no one here to oppose it last time. So anyway, we're here, we're glad you're here, they're going home. God bless you. Mr. Davis, I'm sorry.
And just, I did, did respond to some of your emails, there were a lot out there. My preference was to get everybody in here tonight, and you hear the same thing, and that is, it's denied. And it really had nothing to do with avoiding all of you. And I told Catherine, the first time I've been the boogeyman, but, yeah, it's all right.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all. All right. All right, where are we on the agenda, ma'am?
Eric. I'm getting, I'm getting old, Brooke, getting me an esco.
Items, uh...
It's gonna take them two hours to get all downstairs.
All right. Let's keep on going, State Manager.
Item 20 is the colorectal cancer awareness month proclamation, the Honorable Mayor Stephen K. Benjamin.
Shh. You gonna hang around, brother Clemens? You gonna hang around? Tom? All right, just wanna briefly read this proclamation, recognizing the importance of colorectal cancer awareness, whereas colorectal cancer is a leading cause of cancer-related deaths, and excluding skin cancer is the third most commonly diagnosed cancer for both men and women in the United States, and whereas it's estimated that more than 135,000 new cases of colorectal cancer would be diagnosed in the U.S. this year, and over 50,000 Americans will die from this disease, and whereas colorectal screening, a powerful yet underused lifesaving examination, helps prevent colon cancer through early detection of polyps before they progress into cancer, and whereas, while the vast majority of colon cancer deaths can be prevented through proper screening and early detection, only about 40% of colorectal cancer patients have their cancers detected at an early stage, and whereas, because colorectal cancer is preventable, treatable, and beatable in most cases, there are more than 1 million survivors of this disease in the United States today, now therefore, I, Stephen Benjamin, mayor of the great city of Columbia, along with fellow members of Columbia City Council, de hereby proclaim March of 2018 as colorectal cancer awareness month in the city of Columbia, who urge our fellow citizens to recognize and participate in its observance. Are you here to receive this on behalf? Thank you. All right. Would you like to have a word as well? Would you like to have a word as well? You also wanna have a word?
You also want to have a word? You don't want to, do you?
I missed the note.
Mayor and council, thank you for giving me this opportunity. My name is Patricia Muzon, and March 19th of this year, I will be a stage 3B colon cancer survivor.
All right.
And so, you've already gave, given the status and all the stats for colorectal cancer, but my purpose for being here is, number one, to bring, make people aware of colorectal cancer. Blue is the color for colorectal cancer, so hashtag go blue.
Okay.
And so, my whole purpose is to make people aware of this devastating disease and hopefully save lives. I was sharing with you as we were over there that Sasha here, her mom, as of yesterday, four years ago, died from colon cancer, so she's here to honor her mother. Wanda, she had two family members die from colorectal cancer, and because of my story and what I shared with her, although she was under the recommended age, she was having those symptoms, and she went, and she had a colonoscopy, and her life was saved as a result of that. So, making people aware of this devastating disease will save lives. Hashtag go blue. Thank you.
We'll be hashtagging go blue.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Muzon. And thank y'all so much for being here tonight, and we would not be upset if y'all, if y'all decide to slip out at some point, especially, especially Mom and Dad. Thank y'all so much, all right? All right. All right. City Manager.
Yes, sir. Moving into a period of resolutions, item 21, resolution number R 2018 006, amending resolution numbers R 2005 028 and R 2013 032, establishing a policy for term limits for members of city boards, commissions, committees, and development corporations.
Say motion? Say a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Didn't we do this last month?
We needed to update the resolution.
Did we hold it or something?
It was just a report from the committee.
Report from the committee.
Okay. We had to report, but didn't do the resolution.
And this takes effect immediately, all right?
Yeah.
Move the previous question. Kirk, call a roll.
Mr. Rickaman. Mr. McDowell. Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Ms. Devine. Aye. Mr. Davis. Mayor Benjamin.
Aye. So, we'll pick it back up in two more years? All right.
Item 22, council is asked to approve requests for funding from the Hospitality Tax Fund and to amend the fiscal year 2017, 2018 hospitality tax budget.
All right. Mr. Rickaman.
I would like to move that we hold this, other than Legends, the Karen Foundation. There's a lot of these on this list that we need to talk about. I haven't had time to pull all the information and get the backup, so if there's not an urgency, I understand that anti-karen is something that is needed ASAP, and that's why it's in front of us today, but I'd like to hold the rest for the discussion.
I'll stick at that.
I think there's, there seems to be a bit of broad consensus. Now, first of all, there's a motion on the floor, and there's a second, so I've recognized it with the discussion period. The, um, I get a sense that there, at least, is a great dose of consensus, if not a majority around several items on here. When would you anticipate taking these up?
The next meeting.
All right. Ms., Ms., Mr. McDowell, then Ms. Devine.
List that could be disposed very quickly without, uh, without waiting until next meeting.
Will there, will there some more that you'd like to recommend? I'd like my copy.
I wanted to recommend.
If you took my copy.
He finished?
The, um, that was a question, and/or a statement by Mr. McDowell, or the others that could be included and resolved quickly.
The first one is an urgent need, as noted.
The first one was what?
It's an urgent need, as noted.
It's an urgent need, what?
That we need fencing.
In order that, in order that the staff prepares for the upcoming season.
Yeah. Yeah, there, we had some safety issues at the ballfields at Earlwood Park, and so staff had to take down the fencing and the lighting, but baseball season will start soon, and so I know it's urgent that fencing get up.
That's one of the ones I wanted to talk about. I want to see how that qualifies for an H tax.
They do tournaments.
Recreation.
Recreation.
It qualifies. If you guys want to pick it, take it back up in two weeks, I'm not against that. I'll tell you, I'm prepared to, um, to vote favorably on all items listed in the, in the memo from the City Manager, and put some of these issues to bed, including the cleaning safe and the, and the Vista and, uh, the ambassador program.
That's not a critical, that's for next fiscal year.
No, no, I'm saying, I'm, I'm prepared to put those items to bed nonetheless, but if you guys want, want two more weeks, uh.
I just, Mayor, to be honest, I'd like to have an opportunity to look at the, where some of the, some of these were funded before.
Sure.
Why it is now that we have some of them in front of us. I mean, I just haven't had time to prepare.
Sure.
Unfortunately, I was bombarded by a whole bunch of other issues that we've been dealing with today.
Uh, what's the response to City Manager's concern about the urgent timing need around the ball, the ballfield? If it, if it comports, whether or not you agree or not philosophically, if it comports legally with the definition?
I have to trust the City Manager on that. I, I don't know if two weeks makes a difference on fencing. If it does, then, you know.
You prepared to amend your motion until that effect?
I would.
All right. You prepared a second until that effect?
I would.
Daniel, if you would, restate your motion. This is an amended version.
I move that we hold item two, with the exception of the parks and recreation ball field and the anti-karen foundation. All others to be brought forth to this council at the next meeting, which is in two weeks.
Are we still part of discussion?
Yeah, we're still in the discussion. Is there a second? A second motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to speak on it.
I'm sorry, Mr. Duval.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I question whether the $100,000 for Parks and Recreation for ballpark fencing should come out of H tax. I'm not sure that it would be qualified for an H tax, and I think that it's, it's using H tax improperly. Parks and Recreation is one of our biggest departments, and I think $100,000 could be found in their department. They, they are short some personnel, so I'm sure personnel costs could be moved over to cover $100,000 worth of fencing. I just object to using the, the H tax for that.
Ms. Duval. Any other comments on the motion before the body? All right, so the motion is to move forward with the urgent need in ballfield fencing and Legends of, Legends Concert, and to bring all the other items back two weeks from today for consideration, and any discussions that need to be had with the City Manager about the existing list. Share those with her, and also the rest of council between now and then. Get clarification as needed, and apologize to everyone who came here tonight seeking final disposition. Another, other issues are timely, but maybe not urgent. We'll get to those in, in, in two weeks. If there's no further discussion, move the previous question. Kirk, call a roll.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
No.
Ms. Devine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye. All right, and we'll, y'all, set your timers for 14 days, all right? We'll be back here again. All right, um, what do we have left? Remind everyone, we, we're going to be receding back into executive session when we depart here tonight. Uh, is it appointments? We have, I move that we appoint Breon Sam Walker to the Richland-Lexan Airport District Commission. Is there any discussion? Question, Kirk, call a roll.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Aye.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Ms. Devine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye. All right. The, uh, any items discussed during the work session that require action? Are there any reports or referrals from committee?
And, Mr. Mayor, unless you all wanted to take some action on the portable housing in general, the presentation, the recommendations moving forward, I know we were going to bring back one additional recommendation.
Yeah, we'll bring back action items.
Okay.
You want to wait?
Yeah.
Okay. Can we, but can we have those on the agenda? Next 6:00 PM agenda, make some around? I think the work session's only going to be, uh, OPEPs, right?
Yes.
All right. All right, um, motion, item 24, Mr. Rickaman, refer presentation from the Southside Clean Energy Community to the Environment and Infrastructure Committee, as requested by Honorable Daniel J. Rickaman. Is there a motion?
It's moved.
A second? Second? Any discussion? Move the previous question. Kirk, call a roll.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Ms. Devine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye. The only other, um, uh, citizens I had sign up to speak were all around the 3329 River Drive issue. Is there any other public input? All right. Seeing none, may we have a motion to recede to executive session for items previously articulated at the work session meeting?
I saw move.
Say a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Duval. Any discussion? Seeing none, move the previous question, and the clerk will call a roll.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Ms. Devine.
Aye.